Hello, everybody. My name is Steve Soloff with InformTheVoteNJ.com. And today, we're sitting down with LaRae Smith. She's running for Cumberland County Commissioner in the primaries so far.
Correct.
That vote will happen on June 10th, even though the ballots are in the mail already.
Vote by mail ballots are in the mail. We still have early voting and then people who actually like to go out physically and cast their vote.
Right. Personally, I like to wait up until the end. That way, I can hear everybody, what they have to say. Maybe somebody says something last week that really impresses me. And so that changes my opinion or preference or whatever, you know?
Okay.
Yeah, so.
Can I ask, do you do a vote by mail?
I do not.
Or do you go in person?
I go in person for the very reason I just said.
Okay, yes. Well, the vote by mail, also, a lot of people hold their vote by mails until the end too, so that they have an opportunity to hear and get all the literature in the mail and what they see on TV or research as well.
So they have the opportunity to think about it the same way that I do.
Yes, yes.
And then, just to clarify, in your primary race, there's three people and two seats, right?
Three people and two seats.
So there is a conversation to be had.
There is a conversation to be had, yes.
So I'm very glad that you took the time to show up, help people in the county understand who you are and what you're standing on. Personally, in my process, it takes a long time to sift through all the information, meet people, figure out what's going on.
Absolutely. The key, as far as in this quest, I have been running for different positions and offices for quite a bit of time. And I have found out that you have to be so engaged, you have to be informed, you have to do a lot of research, you have to want to be in a public situation and be able to be responsive to those who may want to know more about you. And I've found that you may get a lot of information, but also, it's important to be able to connect at every level where everyone is. So everybody might not want you to canvass and knock on their door. Everybody may not want to look on Twitter, FaceTime, YouTube, social media. You may have to put something or do some type of advertising or mailing because we have such a different population of voters in Cumberland County especially, that you have to touch almost every person in the best way that you can.
Yeah.
And normally, overall, statistics say it takes about seven touches or seven times that you have communicated with that person to win over that vote.
Wow, that's a lot of work.
It's a lot of work, yes, yes.
So again, I appreciate you showing up and taking the time.
Absolutely.
I think online, there's a lot of information about you already for your background and experience, but let's talk about that just for a couple of minutes for anybody who may not already know.
Okay, sure. First of all, I am LaRae, and a lot of people will see material with Newton, which is my maiden name. My family grew up here in the Bridgeton area. I went through the Bridgeton School System and graduated. I'm currently in currently the class of 1986 President, which next year will be celebrating 40 years. So the leadership ability came and started ground roots here in Bridgeton through school, National Junior Honor Society and things of that nature. My education is from Stockton State. It used to be college then, now university. And my first opportunity for employment was right here. I came back, I didn't leave to go away to school. I kind of stayed close because of my family's. My mother was a schoolteacher for many years and my dad was a truck driver, but his health was prevailing, so we definitely needed to stay kind of close and try to help out. And I'm the only child, so I chose to go to Stockton, but be able to have access here. So what we know as Gateway used to be Tri-County. That was my first start in employment after college. So Mayor Kelly, back then it was Mr. Herb DeMaile was the grant writer. And people may know the head of the authority, Jerry Velasquez, was pretty much the core people for now known as Gateway. So I was under their umbrella in social services, homelessness, transitional housing, all the things that was involved when funding was coming through Cumberland County through the nonprofit. I was able to touch and be involved with all those programs. So definitely, I realized that the advocacy and the community organizing and the leadership skills were being developed then, even though as I'm older now, I see my roots and I praise those roots because those people that were able to touch my lives then have developed me who I am today. And to be involved and engaged is something that we have to continue to do, especially if I'm home-bred. So I look at that as the opportunity to let voters know that I didn't leave. I'm here and the work that I'm putting in now is here, right where home is. My education level, like I said, from Stockton, just briefly, I went into economic development and housing, social services, currently in education because when I left Gateway and was able to go into Camden and redevelop when Jerry Velasquez moved on, he wanted a person that he could take with him, that he had familiarity with in those areas. So I was that kind of person that kind of went along with them. So when we came back here under the empowerment zone in Bridgeton Downtown Office, there was an opportunity to go into the schools, what they call communities and schools, safe schools, healthy students, 21st century. And that allowed us to go into the schools and bring services, which meant more social services for our area. So it opened the door for a lot of the legwork and the grassroots and the groundwork that I'm doing. And I think that will lead the opportunity, maybe not the two times, but hopefully the third time's a charm.
Well, you said earlier, it's seven times.
You have to touch them seven times, but this will be my third time running for a county commissioner seat. So with all the legwork and information and putting in the time, hopefully this third time is a charm. But this is just a primary because we still would have a general election to run against. But I would have to get beat, win in the primary to get to the general.
Sure.
So it's very important for me right now to engage and touch as many voters that I can because the primary would definitely be crucial. So currently, I'm in the schools still, not at the capacity as social services and connecting with grants and funding, but I'm an educator. I currently work in as a teacher at Millville Public Charter School. And the reason being, I cannot work in the district that I am a board member of, which was Commercial Township. So when I became a board member, I had to search out other avenues.
Sure, you got to play by the rules.
I had to play by the rules. And I landed with Millville Public Charter School, so I'm still in education. I still am involved in all different types of housing programs, social service and things of that nature. And that's kind of where I see the biggest need is that homegrown is homegrown. I have been able to build networks and relationships, not just on the county level, but also on the state and the federal level. So my umbrella spreads out tremendously from the municipality and sitting on the municipality boards and land use and chair, Board of Education level, and now especially being on a commissioner level, to be able to try to leverage and network with a multitude of people that can help us with services and things we want to connect here.
Yeah, no, it sounds very strong with the lifelong roots.
Yes.
And lifelong leadership.
Absolutely.
You know, some of the stuff that you sent over with the experience and all that, like it looks good on paper, but it sounds even better in person.
Yes, yes.
You know, so that helps inform me and I hope it helps inform everybody else.
Yeah, people would be surprised and I'm not one to really just go out and market and toot my own horn. Sometimes when you have a lot of names and accolades behind you and you put everything on paper, sometimes it becomes overwhelming, especially for local, because we just want people to know what our passion is about, that what we are, we going to be working for you and servicing you.
Sure.
So that's, I look at that as my ministry. For those of you that understand the religious perspective, a vote is a vote and it counts, but it also is building a relationship that can be ongoing. And that's my purpose.
Cool. So then, let's move on to some of the agenda items and stuff that we talked about in our correspondence.
Okay, no problem.
So the first thing you brought up was transparency and inclusion in the, I guess, the county commissioner board and how things are run. Now, for me, I've just been getting started with the politics locally for the past couple of years. And so there's like a little bit of a perception thing going on there where I definitely agree, there needs to be more transparency and involvement with the community and all that. But then, there's also a certain aspect of, well, the meetings are publicly broadcast. You can access the agenda minutes and see some of the decision-making that's going on. So could you help illustrate what your specific perspectives and opinions on that and what your suggestions might be?
Okay. When I address that question, and we all in this world and age, it's a social media world, and the transparency, people look at that as different perspectives. But when I talk about the commissioner board being transparent, what I want them to understand is the agenda that you put out for the public, even if you attend a meeting, you may could get it online, but you're talking about 300, 400 pages to read in a short period of time. So really, the nuts and bolts of the resolutions and things that you're going to be discussing or already have talked about in executive session, you're presenting to the public then. And that is a lot of nuts and bolts. And you have responded in the same way. That's a lot of material that a person would have to research and read. And a lot of people do. But for the average person here in Cumberland County, that would be overwhelming. So if you come to the first commissioner meeting and you're handed a packet like that, I mean, ultimately, you're in a state of shock, okay?
That was my experience.
Yes, you're in a state of shock. So my biggest thing was that it could be, some people do follow and go on to the public broadcast and some, most of their meetings coincide with the meetings that I had. So our board meeting is the same night as the commissioner meeting. The other, sometimes when they have the two, the meeting, it falls on my land use board meeting. And depending what we have on agenda, we have a backup person that could be there and I have to kind of pick and choose what information we're discussing or doing that night. So I'm the person that does, like you said, if I'm physically there, I get the 300 pages and most of the time, I try to prepare ahead of time and go online and get as much as I can. But as our community, the level of it would be shocking. And maybe if it was bullet pointed in just a little short, brief, one or two front page of the meat and potatoes, it's kind of a quick read if you're sitting there.
So you're basically suggesting making it more digestible, especially for the average person?
For the average person, I think that that would be beneficial. And we talked about this a few minutes ago, not everybody and not a lot of our voters in Cumberland County are technology savvy. They're used, they want to be hands, they're used to a newspaper, which that's something that we definitely have to figure out a way to be able to give them something tangible that they are able to do. They are able to go on the TV, but most of the time, I don't know if Quinn Broadcasting still broadcasts those later in the month because back in the day, I think he used to run those so that people who wanted to watch it would be able to see the recorded portion of it. That could be a suggestion. But overall, I just think that right now, people aren't accusing them of anything. They're just saying, the information that you have, we want to be a part of it, engage with it, but let's figure out a way that it can help and be related to everybody.
Yeah, like more accessible.
Definitely, definitely that way. And the other thing is, I really think that the community, I attended when they were doing the traveling meetings, I attended probably three of the traveling sessions. When it came to downtownship, I participated. When it went to Upper Deerfield, I participated.
So you're talking about, instead of every meeting being done in Bridgeton at whatever that building is called?
Yes, the administration building, yes.
The administration building. Going back to regularly moving it back, maybe one in Millville and then one in Vineland and then one in Commercial Township and da-da-da-da-da.
Yes, and in doing that, let's, let's be just clear about it. Let's not just pick, if the commissioner board is ultimately Republican, let's not just pick areas that the majority of the folks or where you're having the meeting is Republican. Let's be nonpartisan about it.
Sure.
So let's go to townships that may be on the borderline, Democrat and Republican. Mix it up, but if you take it to the people, they feel more invested and engaged in it.
Sure.
If I know a commissioner, I'm not just saying, me as a chair of my community or a community leader, if I see on the agenda that the meeting in August is going to be in Commercial Township, my seniors who I check on and make sure that, you know, their bills are being paid and they need help and they are interested about why is my taxes going up or whatever, I'm going to engage or see if someone can network or help transport them to a meeting so that we have a good turnout. There's no sense going to a community and you only get in two or three people. I'm not saying for them to do that.
Right.
But I'm just saying, let's publicize it and get people out in that community that then there is a dialogue between everybody.
Yeah, I mean, even what we're doing right now is an example of that.
Absolutely.
Half the time, when I see you, it's like a picture online.
Yes.
You know, there's some text or whatever, but we're getting to know each other a little bit better.
Absolutely.
And there's that, that human interaction engagement feel to it.
Yes, and people don't want to understand that, but that's the makeup of Cumberland County. They're, they're human engagement people.
That's just basic human nature.
Yes, they're human.
You want to actually know the person you're voting for. You actually want to have a conversation about the multimillion dollar broadband project or whatever, like you.
Yes, absolutely. And we'll get to talk about that towards the end. But that, that's kind of to me, overall, being not only a community leader, but also participating and hearing the voices of people and sitting down with them at a diner, sitting down at them at the church meeting, sitting down with the youth group, I listen. I let them do the talking so that I can absorb what's going on and then I can put that in a context of saying, okay.
My lyric writing teacher in college said, "God gave you two eyes and two ears and only one mouth."
Yes.
Maybe there's something to that.
Yes, absolutely. And that's kind of where, what it's about. Because we, just to be honest with you, let's look at it. Our turnout has been not the greatest, whether it be presidential, whether it be municipal races, just in general, our voter turnout has been decreasing rapidly. And we have to be able to connect again and engage the voters here in Cumberland County.
Yeah, I think it's fundamental to our form of government.
Yes.
You know, we're a democratically elected constitutional republic, whatever. But the point is, you're supposed to be reflecting the will of the people.
Yes.
And so if the voters aren't even turning out, then are we reflecting the will or is something else happening?
Absolutely.
Right.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, yeah, thank you. Let's see. So I think we touched on a lot of that stuff already. So this kind of transitions into a little bit of some ideas that I've had over the past couple of years as I've been building my website and meeting people and learning a bunch of stuff. The first thing that comes to my mind to help get people more educated about local politics and more engaged would be to just reintroduce local civics into schools. As in, if I don't even know what a county surrogate does, why are you asking me to vote for it, that one person or the other? So I don't even, you could be telling me anything at that point, right? Or, you know, if somebody is running for county commissioner and I just don't even properly know what their role is, it's another point of confusion. And then, I have to spend two years learning.
Yes.
As an adult, as opposed to perhaps it being taught in middle school and high school. And then maybe we take some field trips to meet the people and see how the process works and all that. How do you feel about that general idea?
Well, Steve, working and running twice as county commissioner, what I have come to realize is we have to have civic engagement back, whether it be on a elementary level, whether it be in the middle school, high school, it needs to be in faith-based organizations and youth programs because the disconnect. We're, we're becoming adults and it's not important to vote because we don't know what the agenda or policies and procedures or the constitution and things are about. So absolutely, ultimately, civic engagement is definitely key. If you follow me, you know, on Wednesday evening, and whether I'm a loyal Democrat or whether I can be independent or Republican, there's not a way that during election time that we can not still be in a nonpartisan state as people. I'm a Democratic Chair in Commercial Township. I'm running for a county commissioner seat as a Democrat. But guess what? I have not voiced whether on paper or come out to declare my vote for any of the governors as Democrats because as a chair in my community, I have to engage and get, make sure all the information is out to the voters in my community. So to me, that's a, as an elected official, I have due diligence to the voters to be nonpartisan regardless. I have to be fair.
Yeah.
You know, and in, and in doing that, sometimes people do not understand how you can't cross the line.
Right.
Because whomever gets in, we still would need a collaboration. We still would need to communicate and network. We still would want to have access to them and them have access to us to talk about their policies, to invite them into our community.
You're basically saying, you let the process play out the way it is so that you're not starting unnecessary tension. And then, after all the decision-making processes are done, you work with the person who was hired to work with you.
Absolutely. And you have to be fair about it. So I draw a couple of lines and it's difficult at times because I may have to put on the hat as I'm running for county commissioner. Boop, take that hat off. I'm the Chair of Commercial Township for the Democratic Party. Boop, take that hat off. I'm part of Building One America and in sort of a nonpartisan engagement organization. I'm part of Shiloh Baptist Church, which is a faith-based organization. So at times, I wear so many different hats, but I think as a person overall, it feels good to me because I'm respected of who I am.
Sure.
Because I can, I just was with all of the candidates at the Civil Rights Summit that we had in North Jersey. So Steve Sweeney, Fuller, Sean Spiller, Roz Baraka, a few of them.
Mikey Sherrill?
She was not, she didn't attend. Matter of fact, there was the one Republican.
Spadia?
Spadia was there one of the evenings.
Yeah, I think I saw a picture.
Gee, Got, how do you say?
Gottheimer?
Gottheimer, he spoke Thursday night. So all of them had an opportunity and a platform to get up and speak to everyone and to the leaders throughout the community. And it was, it was well, well, well displayed from every, from all areas that came together. And to me, that's what it's supposed to be. I would have loved to have been able to get them all down in one room and invite our community out to hear them. And that didn't happen, but that's what we have to build on. We have, that's something, whether, whether, whether they respond to us or not, that invite needed to be.
Right.
Across the board.
It's an opportunity.
Democrats and Republicans, because in a way, we have to be nonpartisan because our voters vote different ways. They're not all Democrats, they're not all Republican, and they're not all independent. So to be fair in leadership position, we have to make sure that they are able to hear and understand all of the platforms.
I agree with that.
That is an example of civic.
Especially for somebody new like me, and I was raised, I guess, a particular way where we weren't overly political or whatever.
Right.
And so now that I'm getting into the process, I want to know what my options are. I don't, Democrat, Republican, independent, whatever. Who are you as a person? What are you going to do? You know what I mean? Like, what are your plans?
Yes, definitely. So and on, like I was saying, getting back on track for us, on Wednesday night, there's a youth program in Bridgeton called Nurture to Love, which is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit that works with girls empowerment. And I'm connected and they, they reached out to me because they see me out or happen to be out. And they said, "Ms. LaRae, could you come in and talk to the girls? Because even though they're young, this is stuff that they need to understand and not because you're running as a person for that. Is there a way?" I said, "I can be nonpartisan. I will come in." I would explain to them the different stages of the government and what's local and things of that nature. And I can do that on an ongoing basis for any organization because that is what I was elected to do.
Right.
To be a voice for the people. So civic engagement is so important and it may not get back into the schools right away, but we as community leaders need to get it out in some form or fashion to the organizations, to the programs, to the schools, to the parents that may have, they may get a ballot because of COVID when we had vote by mail. A lot of people are still getting ballots because they're still on the vote by mail registry. If they choose not to do it that way, they have that option. They just have to go or fill out a form and say, "I no longer want vote by mail." A lot of people don't understand it. So that's, that's our job to do.
Got to connect.
We have to connect.
Make those options known.
Yes, definitely.
And that kind of nicely segues into the next thing. So I'm running this website, trying to get the information out to all the people, but it almost seems like the counties themselves could be doing what I'm doing. As in, you had to go get your signatures, right?
Yes.
And hand it into a clerk. Well, couldn't the clerk at that point just hand you, like, what's your platform? What's your background? Would you be interested in doing an interview like this? And we have a couple of meet and greets and candidate forums planned. That way, everybody gets the same opportunity to make their voices heard. And you could do it in a way where somebody has training on how to stay neutral, nonpartisan, just get the information out to the public so that they can make their choice. How do you feel about something like that happening?
Well, first, let me tell you, thank you, Steve, because as I was out over the last two years, the little white signs with info or, a lot of people would say to me, especially the seniors that would go, would see them or whatever, "Well, what group is that and what's that about?" And I'm very engaged.
That's just some random dude.
Yeah, and I'm very engaged, you know, with connecting with, with people that ask me. When they ask me a question and I can't answer it, I'll get back to you because that's something I don't know and I'll do some research on to find out about it. So thank you for your due diligence because it's making a difference. People are going to that and people are connecting the dots and not just looking at a campaign sign that says, "Vote for me." What is that white sign about? I said, "That's a way that you can go and get information that informs you about all, as many that participate of the candidates, information in one platform that you can then do and research from."
You don't have to make a thousand phone calls.
Calls.
You don't have to follow 3,400 people.
Yes.
On Facebook, Twitter, Instagram.
Yes, 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 yes.
You don't have to go to every county commissioner meeting and da-da-da-da-da. I mean, that's the idea.
Yes.
It's still a work in progress, but the idea is to just, a service.
Yes.
We're asked to vote once or twice a year, send out. Send out the information once or twice a year. Hopefully, it's a fair representation.
Absolutely. I I get it and you and I are on that same page because and I will share this with you. I have requested, if we don't have a newspaper, then we need to be sending out in their tax bills or something, some information that's going on your municipality and your county. Because we have a population of people who are not on social media. So I feel as though if you're not on social media and you're of of age, a senior, you still like to be informed.
Sure.
And if I have to go down and make sure my check is there to pay my taxes when they're due quarterly, how come you don't have that responsibility, whether it be in the municipality or the county, that you're not giving me some information to inform me of what's going on?
Of my taxes being spent appropriately.
Yes, and a breakdown. And I'm not saying it has to be all the time, but we need, we're gonna have to we're gonna have to push that envelope that this is is needed to connect the dots because if not, that's why our voters may be staying home.
Right, they don't know what's going on.
We don't know what's going on, so who's gonna get my vote when nobody is informing me of the information? And as me being the person I am, the Cumberland County is huge. It's hard through text mail, canvassing or whatever to touch each and every person. But each and every person gets touched pretty much when it comes to a bill, whether it be water, sewer, taxes.
If you can do it with the taxes, you can do it with the information.
So we're kind of like in a catch twenty-two here.
Yeah, yeah.
We 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 have to have some balance and we also have to have some compromise.
Right.
And that's what what elections are about, whether you're independent, Republican, Democrat. Compromise is important. We all can, this table is big enough for enough of us to sit around and come to what a reasonable decision would be. And also make sure that we are serving and have the input of the voters who put us in that.
Cool.
So definitely, I'm on that page with you.
Gotcha. And then the third idea I have with that would be rebuilding local press.
Oh.
So it's one thing for the kids to get educated and engaged. It's another thing for the government or the counties to help get some information out there in a neutral way. But then I guess you would need some people that you can trust at the local level because national media is questionable at the moment, we'll put it that way.
Yes.
But at least a handful of people in the community that you know can follow up.
Yes.
Hey, Commissioner Smith, I I heard this thing that was said at one of the meetings. And then this other person brought up a fair point that maybe there's, you know, there's a disagreement or a tension there. Can you help clarify that? Blah, 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 blah. As opposed to, you know, a couple of people start a rumor on Facebook and then everything blows up. And it it's, you know, half the time it's nonsense.
Yes, absolutely. So like we said, I pushed with in my own organization because I started that myself and Gary Wilson, who is Downtown Ship, we kind of merged together because we're a small community. We have to do things that are getting information out. And that's what I said, the little newsletter or something. But we can take it to the next level. Because if you notice every so often, Bridgeton has a little paper that comes out about them. Of course, we have the reminder, we have the New Jersey Today, New New Jer- something, New Jersey, something today that's usually in the diners when you go through, which is a newspaper, it's physical. A lot of people depend on that.
Right.
In the Loringer match, that's what you see, those papers out. So that
It's their habit.
Their habit and that response is needed. So I would love to see that. And I think on the level of different municipalities, but I know like bigger cities, the Bridgeton, the Violin, the Millville, I think we used to depend on like the Daily Journal and the Bridgeton Evening News. Maybe they could do a collaboration amongst the the cities and the mayors to maybe formulate something that would have a little bit of blurb for each one of those areas. And then maybe the municipalities could put a little bit together and then cover the municipalities. But it's needed. I don't know how we all could go about it, but just you and I sitting here talking about it.
It's a kernel of an idea that could get started.
It's a stepping stone and it has been talked about. I do, I have discussed with at least two mayors that I know of and and that it that is was at the forefront of what they want to get going and get back. So and not to mention their names because like I said, there that was something that they have in the works and were planning and has been on their agenda that this is, we need this.
Sure.
So hopefully Cumberland County will get get something eventually. I would love, I would love to to have that. And like you said, I do think it's enough writers that could be covering the information and be nonpartisan and and it's about getting that information out.
Right, cool. All right, so then switching back to your agenda. One of the things you brought up was services for families, seniors and children. And you're concerned about the potential cuts coming up. And the reason why I use the word potential is depending on which type of national media you listen to. If you listen to a right-leaning outlet, they'll say things like Doge is completely about making things more efficient. But then if you listen to something that's more left-leaning, they'll say they're going about it in the wrong way and they're being reckless with the cuts. So for someone like me, who's not as well-versed in local politics as you, could you help illustrate what those concerns are and maybe like any specific things that have actually already been cut?
Okay, well, let's let me just clarify a little bit so people have a better understanding. A lot of the budgets are not confirmed yet. So I know the county commissioner's budget should be coming out soon for the public portion of it. Municipalities have a separate budget that they're working off of. And then the federal government has a different agenda and financial situation that they're working off of. In areas like ours, it's strongly that your municipality would get money funneled from the federal or state level and then they're dispersing and doing programs out. On the next level, the county level, the county would be getting state and federal money that comes down and then they would be funneling it out for programs and projects and things of that nature. And then the federal, the same way like with Education, Department of Education, Veterans Affairs. So allegedly, whoops, I'm sorry.
No problem.
Allegedly allegedly, we hear, we hear that information, oh, they're gonna cut this or they're gonna cut that. They're gonna cut this, this is gonna be cut. We really can't confirm unless those budgets are passed so that then we can look and identify what numbers aren't matching up. So that means if veteran services are cut on the federal level, how is it affecting the state level and how is the state level now affecting the
Sure.
the county level and how is the county level affecting the municipalities that they're those money, that money goes to? So it's it's gonna be a hard situation until all those announcements come out.
Right. It's like tense. You're waiting, you're not sure what's gonna happen.
Everybody's like tense. You you may hear that projects are being cut or we don't have enough funding in our budget to match up what we anticipated to continue on with projects. But we really won't know until everybody rolls those budgets out and try to align things.
And when do you expect that to be rolled out?
Everybody is a different level and I'm like you, Steve, when it comes to like passing up to each level to find out that information is sort of like researching, okay, when is the county commissioner's budget gonna be passed? So it's May and I do think in May theirs would come out. It's almost like the state formula for education. I sit on the board and we had to do a presentation to the community on what the state budget looks like for our community and what taxes are gonna be raised or not raised and all that kind of thing. So we just had ours locally. Every municipality will have a different date when they actually present it because you have to present it to your community. Then it has to be voted upon and then it goes to the county level.
Sure.
So the county realistically has to get all those and see what they have in the pot to fund or do things of that nature.
It's a lot of coordination.
So it's a lot of coordination and communications for that. But ultimately, I'm here to say, facts matter. I don't like to insinuate if we don't really have the facts.
Right.
So we may hear veterans programs are gonna be cut. We may hear Department of Education and school feeding programs are gonna be cut, Medicaid is gonna be cut. We can't really, I can't personally really say. I I would promote and rally that we make sure some things definitely don't get cut. But until everybody matches up of that funding, it's sort of a stalemate.
Kind of what I'm getting at is you're just on top of it. You're watching.
Oh, I'm watching.
Yeah.
I'm watching.
I got you. So and and I think that's a very fair way of going about it. As in, we see what you guys are doing.
Right.
People are scared, but we don't know a hundred percent if it's gonna happen.
Right.
But I'm watching.
I'm watching.
And you're gonna be ready to react.
Yes, we can react.
Wrong things happen.
Yeah, we can react accordingly based on how big of cuts come for this area. And we have to be honest, we're in Cumberland County. Our community definitely would not be able to maintain or continue a lot of the services that are needed if we take big cuts. Because our population and the organizations and the programs that we have here depend on that type of funding.
Right.
To to maintain a smooth community transition, whether it be veteran services, which we have a lot of veterans. We have a lot of schools that education is important to us. We have a lot of social service programs that are important to us here in Cumberland County. So it depends how deep those cuts go is gonna be a major factor for us.
Okay, so then I guess my follow-up question would be, you're watching.
We're watching.
So if something does happen, do you have the networks and connections? And it sounds like by our earlier part of the conversation you do, but just to verify, you have the networks and the connections to react quickly should those things happen?
I have developed that. I'll say I'm competent competent enough that if I can't find the information or don't know it at that time, I can make some phone calls to make sure that I get the right information and then strategically can work to develop better relationships or put in a call so that somebody else from here could call to to verify where we are and what are we gonna do? And I can ask those questions once I know. I can, or if I can't answer questions, it can't be at a meeting. I can relay that information to other chairs in our party. I can relay the information to other social organizations who get that funding so that they're aware or they can then react and be able to carry the torch on or ask those important questions. So that's the key of building a good network, whether it be on the local, state or federal level.
Cool.
And if you're engaged and your name gets out and known, it's easier to make those phone calls to get the answers so that our voters and our community aren't ten steps behind.
Right.
That we can react immediately. So sometimes the first one that makes the call
It's actually
gets the reward.
It's actually reminding me, you know, as I've been doing this for the past couple of years, people have asked me, oh, why don't you run for Violin School Board or why don't you run for something? And I'm like, I don't know what's going on.
Right.
That's why I'm asking you the question, right? Like, I'm legitimately trying to learn.
Right.
Whereas someone like you, who's been doing it your whole life, you're much more in a position to get it done quickly.
Yes, and the key is in in the generation that we're living in now. I'm getting tired, Steve. Almost, it's not that you don't have a life, but you do have family and grandchildren that you wanna spend time with and your husbands and wives and things like that. So being in this type of community outreach and leadership position takes a lot of time. And it takes a lot of time away from your home life as well. And we need a balance. But right now, we need younger people, like we were talking about the civic engagement. The next generation, we need them now. We need them, we need them to be mentoring and working with them now so that they are ready to be able to step in and fill in.
I I agree.
Immediately, because we're we're, it's a it's a gap right now.
I would I would add in, though, I agree, I agree. It's time for my generation younger to start stepping up. However, sometimes when we do, we get pushback. You got people who don't wanna let go of control and
Absolutely.
are hesitant to say anything. You know, the political atmosphere is super weird.
Yes.
People think on both sides of the aisle, like, I'm trying to trick them. I'm trying to like, it's like, no, I just, I just don't know what's going on.
Right, and 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 that's honest and that's fair. And that's what I said about today. In the day's error, we have to step back because somebody gave us a chance.
Right.
You know, we have to say, everybody doesn't have a hidden agenda. Some people do, but everybody doesn't have a hidden agenda because they attend your meeting. They just may wanna inquire about it or were interested or concerned or maybe wanna say, you know, I have a background in that, I'm interested in doing it. We can't, we can't be hesitant and shut the door and and not allow this next generation to 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 come and be a part of what's going on.
Especially Cumberland County where you need the help, right?
Definitely, definitely.
All right, so I think that would basically cover the veteran services and education topics. Unless there was something else you wanted, because it was the same basic.
Yes, definitely.
About the cuts that could be coming.
Yes, definitely. And we have to look at, if if you pair those two together, that's a population of ours with veterans and education and we don't even, we may touch on it, but I would even classify the veteran, the education in our homeless population and information and resources is gonna be crucial for this area. And the reason I'm saying that is in Cumberland County, a lot of people don't realize the population of homelessness that we have.
I've been watching it grow.
And it's growing and growing and it used to be not so visible. And not to say that people turn the eye to it, but we have to turn away people at our Maze Landing Shelter that may have come from other areas. And our community people here from the county aren't eligible to get in because they're so full up. Because we have a multitude of people that are outside of our area that are here where we have to come up with experts that are experts in homelessness and who service that population. We gotta have them to the table. And when I say to the table, I don't mean sit down and let's just talk. We need an an action table.
Sure.
Because they are the boots on the ground. They know what's going on, they see what's going on. If we don't know on a commissioner level or on a community organizing level about it, go to the people who do. Let's talk with them and bring them in or understand what they're doing. They know all the populations and who's around and where these populations are and what services are needed. And if we're receiving outside persons from Gloucester, Atlantic, Cape May, Cumberland, I mean Camden, and they're all here, if those numbers are so high, what's going on with the county residents here? Because dollars come, people don't realize dollars. Because dollars come, people don't realize dollars come for tiers of your community for that. So if our money, our pot of money for Cumberland is servicing people from all those outside counties. What are those outside counties doing with their money that they're getting for the homeless population? So that's why you say you have to research and you have to track what's going on.
Yeah, I wouldn't have thought of that, because they're getting money to handle their homeless population.
Absolutely.
Their homeless population.
Is down here in Cumberland.
What are they doing with that money?
Yes, so you you kind of have to follow it and people don't have to get that deep into it, but. To me, it's common sense. Okay, let's.
Well, you're actually thinking about it.
Yeah, you think you have to think about it.
Yeah.
If I talk to one of the uh community people services that's serving homelessness and they're like. La Ray, we got so much influx of this. And then that's my next question, where are they coming from or what's going on? And then when they. Respond to me, well, this is happening or this is happening. And then you're like putting two to two together. Okay, well, what did we used to do? If we have a person that we register on the roll, we may keep them overnight. For an emergency situation, but did we give them a ticket or did we connect them to services to get back to Gloucester County?
Right.
Why are we taking the burden on of everybody else's? Are they doing or are they reciprocating that for us? If they have people from Cumberland County, are that is that money being used for them?
Right.
Or are they not? So you it it's a balance, but guess what? You have to be out talking with the people in that field. To understand with it.
Tangle the mess.
You have to untangle it and find out um ultimately what's going on. And like you see, my my biggest thing is I noticed. We have a lot of people that um are at intersections with signs like you would be going through a city of Camden or Philadelphia. Um and you're seeing it and you're saying that was never so prevalent like it is now. Something is going on. What is happening here?
Right.
So that was brought to my attention and and I noticed it and I said, let me go and I reached out. And I set up a meeting and then I went to a little diner and had a little lunch with a few of them. So that they can explain to me how this works, what's going on.
Right.
And then I actually physically went out to some of the camps where the homeless population is in Cumberland County. To see.
Yep.
What's going on, where they are, who's, what their needs are.
Boots on the ground.
Yes.
I I appreciate that because that's part of what I'm doing right now. Going out to the meetings and stuff and meeting people and doing all this. You can't just like speculate and talk about it online or whatever. You gotta get involved.
Guess what? When you're at a level where you're an elected official, you vote, you're are, you are voting on that. So whatever is put before you, how are you making an informed decision? For a vote if you know nothing about it or haven't did any homework or made any other connections?
Right.
So that that's.
And the same, kind of like what I'm doing to learn more about you, when you're elected. You're gonna go out and research the information so that when you vote on that topic.
Yes, absolutely.
You're talking about.
Absolutely. And you, as you can see in that um, researching homework is is what I do. I try to be informed. I try to attend the meetings and I try to do things, but guess what? The meeting doesn't stop after the meeting.
Right.
There's homework to do.
Right.
You have to be out and you have to be at meetings and you have to talk to people. You you can't be afraid. You could be at a diner, but you gotta introduce yourself. And guess what? When you do that, you'll be surprised at how many people have an issue in their community. That may, they may never have thought to say.
Right.
And they may ask that question.
Actually thought about that, like um doing community outreach or like survey blasts through email like. If everybody in the county just wrote down, what do you think your top three issues are? And then somebody goes through and it's like. We noticed twenty thousand people are complaining about the pothole on County Road two six seven or whatever. We better take care of that.
Yes, yes, yes. So thank you for basically uh. Taking the platform that I had and being able to break it down for something like this because a lot of people. Would like to know this or understand it better. And I am one, I can't, you know, I I may have some volunteers. I may, you know, be able to recruit family to help me out. In the primary especially, but you you're you're touching lives. You're you're engaging the community and engaging the voters. And I have been doing this kind of from day one. So ultimately, I look every time I run, whether it be for. The Board of Education, whether it be for commissioner seat. You could see the numbers growing and growing and growing because I have touched the. Touched them enough that they feel a connection with me.
Right.
So as long as that continues to grow, that's saying I'm doing, I'm out in the community.
Right.
That can confirm to me that you are out doing what you're supposed to do.
Exactly. So then to take it right back to the homelessness stuff, I see a couple of other ideas. You said creating more shelters and walk-in centers. Uh do you want to elaborate on that idea or?
That came from, as I say, having a little conversation with a few other people that run some of the homeless programs or. Um I go out, I have been out to the shelter. I've dropped stuff off um. That came back to me is like the Maze Landon is is what we have, but. If you go to the faith-based walk-in centers and um those that care for the homeless, so they they are overwhelmed. Because the numbers are just.
Skyrocketing.
Outstretching. If if you were assigned and your funding came through to build a shower for them to eat and whatever. And the number was twenty and you're seeing forty, you're overwhelmed.
Yep.
We need more. We need something, we need, we need to do something more. So coming up with that particular topic, like you said, I did my research on it or whatever. I was like, if if it's going to be this way and we're going to have a majority of people that have. Come to our community, whether they become residents or whatever. If we're overwhelmed now, what's gonna happen down the road? Because we don't know where all this is going on the federal level.
Yeah.
I'm just saying um anytime buses can pull up to Bridgeton and just drop people off, that's scary.
Yep.
So.
We don't know who they are.
We, yeah, yeah, we have to kind of prepare ourselves for this, whether we're community organizers, because mind you. Churches got phone calls. Look, people are here. They don't have a place. We need blankets. We need food. So if you're engaged in your community or your faith-based organization or even locally in. Code Blue and those programs, you are on the ground and you see what's going on, but. Everybody else may not see it.
That that was actually another idea I had coming into this interview, which is. If we're preparing for those uh cuts and such, maybe even writing out like, okay, there. We're watching out. We need people to help us should something happen. Who's interested in? You know, signing up to help at the homeless shelter on Sundays or something like that.
Yes.
Because, you know, if if it really does get as bad as.
We're gonna have to build a big volunteer base of people. And if they not engaged in voting and don't under and don't know what's going on. We can build a volunteer base to help for if all these cuts come down the road.
Yeah.
And there's people that are retired that have a lot of, um just think of all the multiple of education. Class um facility, class workers. I mean, there is a lot of talent here in Cumberland County. Of retired people who haven't left and went off to vacation homes and things of that nature. They're still here in this community. They're just probably looking or waiting for somebody to ask.
That, yeah, a lot of times that could be true.
You just.
A lot of people are just sitting around waiting for something to do.
Yeah, ask, what do you do on Wednesdays? What would you like to volunteer for? Blah 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 blah.
If you're not doing anything anyway, right?
Look, if you don't ask, you don't get.
Right.
Yeah, absolutely. So a no is a no and that's fine.
Yeah.
But if you don't ask.
That'll be it.
That that's it, so.
So yeah, that sounds like we're on the same page with that too. To circle back to the education thing, so I I was a teacher, I guess, on and off for like twenty years, more of a private tutor. But um so I'm interested, when you said you were going to develop study models to help students catch up from COVID. Could you help just explain what that would look like?
My thinking on this, I'm gonna be honest with you. Being um this year and last year. In two separate areas, two city areas, a Bridgeton Millville area. And I know as a board member in commercial township, COVID really hurt us as far as the educational structure. First for children. There is a big loss, especially in language arts and math. The study model to me that I was thinking of that potentially could grow or do anything else. Um and there's different models and techniques out of it. We said there's a retirement base of teachers. There's a retired base of. A little bit of every workforce that's around. You just have to ask. If our kids are not reading and up to par on math and language arts on grade level. If they're in a grade right now and still have to promote themselves to the next grade. So you gotta do the grade that you're in and then you gotta back up one or two years from COVID. That's a lot of backup.
Yep.
So either we're gonna have to do programs of study models of getting retired teachers or volunteers into our school. Helping because of course there's a shortage of substitute teachers and it may be even teachers depending on. How things come from the federal government of what's gonna be available and what's not, because you have a lot of. Teachers on the tier of that twenty-five years. They may not have the age. But they have the years. And whatever their option or choices is gonna be, it may leave us in more influx moving forward with education. So you have, you have colleges that have intern teachers, I mean, students that are going in the field of teaching. We are gonna have to collaborate and work within our communities and what we have available. To try to work with those students that are at that gap to bring them up. Because you can't move forward if you don't, can't go backwards.
Right.
So.
You have to, you have to learn at the level that you're at.
That you're at.
I, oh man.
So.
This is gonna be my little rant for a second. I actually, I was taught ESL online to Chinese kids eh for years and that was my biggest gripe. They would just keep pushing the kids forward and forward. I'm like, you're trying to give this kid like a. Ninth grade reading assignment and he's like at a third grade level. It's you can't, it doesn't work.
It doesn't.
And you see their eyes like glaze over and they don't want to do the work. Just give him something easier. Like the kid's not stupid.
Right.
He just needs to work at his level.
Right.
And then when he gets better, then then you move him on.
Yes.
So I I I think I get what you're putting down.
Yeah.
As in unfortunately, because of COVID, there's gonna be some catch-up work to be done.
Yes, and there may be funding and it may not. Like you said, we have to kind of wait and see. Are there gonna be summer programs for kids to go in? And even in summer programs, of course, it's this, it's the. Um activities that are required, but you still have to kind of give the kids a little fun and you have to make learning. Um fun for them, but look at the resources that we have that may not cost us anything. If we have a pool of retired teachers or volunteers and you don't even have to be a teacher to help someone.
So you want to leverage the community, the people who are already here.
Yes, and not just do it in a school setting. See, people forget about that. If you're doing grassroots grassroots work. There's opportunity in buildings and available space that all of this could be done.
I mean.
You got libraries, you got faith-based community centers, you have churches, you have um picnic and parks. Kids love learning if it's science or math and being outdoors in the summer.
Right.
Um you can push in those people that want to volunteer during the school day when school is in session. Because they that that may engage and get administration to realize that. Kids relate to different people in different ways. I may get the attention, my mother who's a retired teacher may get the attention of a um. Group of students for one day and engaging them in a lesson. At their level because it's a different perspective. It's not the same teacher every day.
Sure.
So I'm learning, oh, guess what I learned today? This person came in, it gets them more excited and engaged.
Form of stimulation.
It's different stimulation.
Right.
And if you have a pool of teachers that are at that twenty, twenty-five level. If they've been teaching the same subject every year and the kids are just rotating to that particular teacher. The kids talk. Kids talk. If they had such and such teacher and they know that their gen next, their brother is gonna have this person and then. They talk. So how that teacher teach is already gonna be transparent to those kids moving into that class. So if that teacher is not engaging and restructuring on a yearly basis the information. Those kids are gonna come in and 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 they're gonna hit a plateau to say. Oh, my brother told me what kind of teacher she is and I'm gonna come in here and I'm gonna do this or whatever. So. If that teacher is still, if that teacher is still in that same grade level. Teaching that same subject is the onus of the administration and that teacher that they're going to. Engage kids a little differently.
Right, because kids will get bored with the staleness of it. Or they'll try to manipulate it because, you know, their older brother said, oh, well, this is how you get away with this and this is how you get away with that. Yeah.
Yes.
Have to be on top of your game, is basically what you're saying.
Absolutely. And that's where the younger generation of. Teachers that are wanting to be teachers in these colleges and the universities or whatever. Can be so, so insignificant and important because they're the tech age. That's what kids are into. You know what I mean?
So much possibilities.
And I'm not afraid to say it, I'm fifty-seven years old. I'm kind of, they, Ms. Smith, you're an old school teacher. I am, because I still like to write on the board. Because if you don't know how to multiply or you're having a problem with division. You putting the answer in on your Chromebook and saying what's nine hundred and fifty-three times ten and getting the answers, not teaching you.
Right.
I have to show, I have to physically show you on the board. So it's a, they are getting a different skill that may not be what the curriculum is saying to them.
Right.
But they're understanding, oh, Ms. Smith, that's what I did wrong. Yes, this is what you did wrong.
You're seeing the process.
Cause you see in the process. So we gotta have a mix. Of of everything to to be able to help every child that learns differently.
Yep.
And if we don't start doing that, it's gonna be difficult because we can't, they can't just be. Geared to the state testing, we're just testing because our textbook says this is what we have to do. We gotta be, we we have to come out of the box totally.
Going more towards how to think and not exactly what to think just to get past the test.
Yeah.
I got you. Uh so then. I guess the only topic left would be to touch on any of the well-known county issues. That are going on for a while and whether or not you want to touch on them specifically.
We can.
So just, I mean.
I'm I'm I'm, I'm game. I I do.
I'm just saying, I don't, I don't know what your specific.
I do.
Platform.
I I try to, I try to do and stay up on, like I said, I may not be able to physically attend a lot of meetings. But I get the material and I read it and I watch it. And I try to stay informed and when I do go. I do have an agenda because I'm looking at the agenda that they have. So I'm not going in a meeting. Um it it would be like expect the blessing when you walk into the church. I'm expecting to get some answers when I walk into the meeting because I have some questions and I'd like them to be clarified.
Go into the meeting if it's not important to you.
Right.
Which is one of the reasons why it gets difficult for me because why am I going to a random planning board meeting? If there's nothing important to me about it. So anyway, so eh. How about we just start with the NABAV extension? So by my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, because you're you're way more. Into all this stuff than I am, but by my understanding, it's been going on for decades talking about this. And uh there was a meeting, I think it was at the. And uh, there was a meeting, I think it was at the four H building last year that I attended and they did a really good job of explaining their plans or whatever. Um, but I haven't heard anything since. And that might be my fault for not going to any more meetings or whatever. But again, as an average citizen, is it my job to go to every meeting or whatever?
Right.
Really, but.
Right.
So for people who don't already know, the basic idea is the trucks come off of Route fifty five at the Sherman Ave exit going towards Millville eh and Bridgeton. And then there's this road, NABAV, that cuts out through the farm.
Yes.
Now, if they extended that through more farm over to the industrial park in Millville, it would make the truck routes a lot easier and free up congestion in Center City Millville. Is that is that basically correct?
That's basically correct. And basically, I'm gonna give you a scenario of exactly what's going on. And it's just not a NAB Avenue issue, only because it's happening in other communities too. Smaller communities like down in Commercial because we have the sand companies and we have the huge trucks that come through and right through the middle of town. And um it gets congested, it gets overwhelming, you're passing housing. So with NAB Avenue, um, the the ideal and concept was there and it's been around for a long time. But the key is in in a project like that, you have to and if it comes from federal dollars, normally you have to match dollars. And I think it's been at a stalemate because in our county, we have we aren't able to match the dollars. If the federal funding don't, federal government doesn't extend funding for that particular project, it's gonna be hard for us to take out of our capital budget or resource that we have set aside funding for that to be able to carry that project through. So I think it's like at a stalemate, like, okay, great talk. We're gonna do this. Engineering got involved, everybody got involved and then.
We just don't have the money.
We financially, are we in a position to do that? Hmm. So it comes to a freeze. And if people don't come to the meeting and question about it, eh eh we don't have the money and know we can't do it, that's not something publicly we wanna come out and say.
And start talking about.
And bring that back up again unless we can do something about it.
Right, and and that is basically what I was thinking the other day. As in, if we've been talking about it for so long and we know we don't have the money, then why are we like misleading people to think it's going to actually happen?
Right. And that's where we have to, know what, we just, we talked about it earlier, we just gotta be transparent.
Yeah.
So to me personally, um, if this is the situation, like I said, I don't know. You only can get what they put out to you. So you're not in those executive sessions to know actually what's going on and people may not be talking about it. But to me, the honest way to go about this and to be fair to everybody across the board as far as the community that may it may affect or whatever, just come out and say that. Unfortunately, this project is on a halt. Financially, we have to match X amount of dollars and you may even not even have to say that. We would have to come up with X amount of dollars and we were looking forward to the federal government of matching X amount of dollars. That's not gonna happen. So this has to be put at a standstill at this moment. Boom.
Right.
At least you're honest about it, you're transparent about it and you can move on.
Right.
So I I do get it and I know on the opposite side. So if I had to be a become a, when I become a commissioner and we're gonna, I heard you say that earlier. You said commissioner, when I become a commissioner, um, at the table, some things are public um aware for the public and some things are private because of the executive session. Some things aren't supposed to be blasted out or whatever and I understand that. But I would be the person at the table at that particular time, if that project has been this way and people are asking about it, I think as a onus of us as elected officials to at least come out and say, this is what's going on. You can't keep sweeping it under the rug and saying, we don't, we it's it's, we don't know what's going on.
So your top thing there would be transparency. Uh, do you have like a general gauge of whether you would continue to push for it or just let it go?
Well, it depends. I didn't read because a lot of that was in an executive session, so you wouldn't get.
Don't know until you get there?
Yeah, you wouldn't get the inform the the information that has been put out. And in a way, you would have to do all the research too. Because you gotta figure, um, architects were involved, planning was involved. You'd have to get so many integral pieces to map it out, which I can do because I'm experienced in that by being on the land use board. But also my um affiliation with projects and economic development and housing projects that I've done in Camden, here in Bridgeton, all over the United States when I worked with HUD. You just would have to lay this out and kinda track the whole policy and procedure and see where, okay, it came to a standstill here.
Right.
And now is money the underlying issue and this is where we are? So I I do, I do agree with you on that. But I would like definitely think that it comes up every now and then. People do discuss it or asked about it and then you're like, I'm not sure what's going on. But I think personally that right now that finance is.
It's probably the sticking point.
The sticking point on that.
Uh, well, then similarly, there was a big to do about the middle mile broadband grant. There are, you know, a lot of meetings with a lot of opinions going on. And I can kinda see both sides of it.
Absolutely.
Are are you aware of any update on that?
The um only update that I could say about that.
For people who might not know what it is, uh, and correct me if I'm wrong.
Wrong.
My general understanding is they wanted to lay dark fiber, which is basically just the base ground cable for broadband to do a ring around the county.
Right.
So that uh later on, the municipalities or private um broadband companies could finish connecting to individual homes and such.
Yes.
Uh, and that costs quite a bit of money, uh, which we got from the infr- what do you call that? Inflation Reduction Act.
Yeah.
Um, but then we also had to match some of the money.
Yes, and we went into a partnership, remember with Salem? We went into a partnership or some type of agreement, Salem. And right now, um, I think um the partnership would have to have a lead. And Salem would is wants to be that lead. And I don't think Cumberland.
Leading the project.
Leading the project. And I don't think Cumberland has agreed that with that partnership, with that partnership that they were going to allow Salem to be the lead on that.
Okay.
And I was at a few of those meetings and one of my concerns is is because I reside in commercial township. Um, we have down in Commercial have wetlands down there. So even with the presentation that was given out and the budget that they put out or whatever, they did, one thing that they did and they realized that they're gonna have to change poles and that has to be put in there on sort of, in certain areas you may not have to, but in wetlands you do. Because those poles that go up eventually because of the 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 environment and the rain and the wetlands and the water that we get down there, the poles are eventually gonna rot out. So that was one of my concerns is I do understand it's needed um because those areas really hurt during um COVID when we had to have everybody on virtual um to be able to connect. I mean, we were, I was personally, um, we were out making sure that the kindergartners and uh first graders knew how to work uh the Chromebooks or their little tablets and things like that. So teachers and community people and people really went way out of the way during COVID to make sure that some kinda way the kids were connected, able to get the lessons, that the teachers were able to communicate and do that. Broad, this would help.
Yeah.
Our area tremendously, but I think it's at the stalemate of now. And I don't know if it's a power thing of who has to take the lead and financially, who has to give the most money to match to make it happen. Um, I think that's kinda where it is right now.
Okay, so basically.
The same thing as the NAB project basically, but at a stalemate with that.
I'm not particularly out of the loop for not having heard an update. It's because it's at a stalemate.
Yeah, um, and I think um we'll probably be seeing a lot of that, like I said, once funding budgets come out or whatever. I think it may for some of the projects that are like at a stalemate, it will bring a little bit more light. Because overall, you'll see where dollars need to go and what's the priority list.
Yeah.
So if those projects are at a stalemate right now and on a back burner and we get X amount of dollars, what, three or four projects that are on the back burner, are we gonna be able to move up?
Sure.
So I I get it and that.
It all takes time.
It's gonna take time and that's gonna be um where policy and procedure and the leadership comes together at the table and figure out what things are the priority for our community.
Um, how about the the sewage infrastructure? I I've heard downtownship is actually in the middle of doing it, right?
Yes.
And um I guess Laurel Lake had some problems with that.
That's my community, yes.
Why don't you explain that? Cause I'm still a little bit fuzzy. I it seems so fundamental, like there's a lot of municipalities that just basically don't have up to code sewage. Is that what it is?
Right, well, in the smaller areas like a Commercial and Down, you gotta realize in the cities, you are connected to water and sewer in your city. In most of the municipalities, in the small municipalities, we're not. So we're responsible for a well and septic on our properties. So there's no like actual plugins in those areas that the water is coming through and the septic is coming through. So that's a responsibility on the resident.
Um, and it's. Quite expensive, right?
Expensive, very expensive. And in certain areas, like uh, for example, I would say, you said in commercial township Laurel Lake, the houses are so close together in Laurel Lake areas that with the new with regulations and laws under the land use ordinances, um, a lot of those homes had put in the septic. And because the it was not home ownership and it was landlord, a lot of them didn't go through the proper procedures to get their certificates to put in those well and septics in the right spots where they were supposed to be so that it was safe for everybody. So that's the biggest concern in areas like that. If we do go in this direction of trying to hook up um septic and stuff, how in those smaller municipalities is that gonna work out and what's gonna be the cost? So in your bigger municipalities, Violin, Millville, Bridgeton, I think Violin has their own.
Yeah.
And I think one of the things that came to the forefront is I think Violin wants to take the lead on that for the county.
Okay.
I did hear that, I think I've read something about it, that Violin kinda wants to be the lead for this particular project.
Sure.
So it may come to the same thing like Salem wants to take the lead. Who are we gonna allow to take the lead and and bring this together? And what funding is it gonna take and what cost is it gonna cost? And what risk is the municipalities gonna have?
Sure.
Doing it. And I'm just gonna tell you, I want, I I I've come to Port Mars, I live in commercial township, like I said. Um, when Jerry Velasquez came back with the empowerment zone back to downtown Bridgeton, the development of those small areas was something that was at the forefront and talked about through this getting connections in areas so that a commercial township could have been a Kate May Village. You know what I mean? Because you had the waterfront and all that. A lot of that wasn't was wasn't what the municipality and residents wanted at that time.
They wanted to keep it more.
They wanna keep, they wanna keep it just the way it was. So that was a, and I wouldn't say a fight, but that was just probably the turning point of people backing away and saying, hands off. If this is not what you guys wanna do as committee members, we'll back off. But now the committee members that get elected in, um, and I think it was uh, it could have been Mr. Doug Auburn, who, I'm trying to think who really, he went back out when he was president of the board. He went back out and reestablished and built those relationships to promote that again. So that there could be the opportunity for septic and sewage and water and stuff to be in those municipalities so that it could flow better. But um, like I said, just through reading and a few meetings that I was able to attend and listening and talking with them, um, I think that's kinda where that is. Um, but I don't know if that would have to go on a ballot vote. See, it would be interesting. I would have to do a little bit more research for that, but.
Rewatch the um the Democrat debate the other day. And there was the issue of whether we can even have grassroots referendums and initiatives on the ballots.
Right.
Why not? Why why would we not? Oh, wait, because Sweeney said that's for the elected officials to do.
Yes.
Right? So he wants to have the traditional system. But I haven't seen any initiatives on the ballot in years.
Right, and in certain areas are going back to that. And it's based off of um who's in, who who's elected in and how that format will work. How that elected official is working, how that elected official is working with the municipalities to roll things out like that. But that is, that that's the, that's the point of how voters can become more informed, but can have some more le have more leverage of what they engagement of what they want going on.
They knew they could do something effectively at the grassroots level, then they might actually try.
Try, yes.
Mm hmm, so maybe maybe we'll see that in the near future.
Future. It it could possibly, it could possibly come. Um, and I'm one to say, I don't know everything, I'm not gonna claim to know everything. Um, and like I said, if I don't know anything about something and the question comes up, I try to use my resources to find out or get the information so that I can have the opportunity to respond in the right format. And especially if someone is engaged to want to ask that question.
Yeah.
Because some people have gotten to the point that they just don't wanna talk about anything.
Right.
So when they do come out, you want to reciprocate and make sure that because now they're engaging with you.
Mm hmm, I mean, that's what you want, right?
That's exactly what you want.
Acknowledged and something might actually get done.
Yes, yes, and that and that's what it's about right now. And getting done, when you say getting done, things are getting done. But at to what pace and what benefits, that's that's what we have to unravel.
Right, right. Uh, let's see. We've got, how about tourism? As in, there's been a a push recently, I believe, for Cumberland County to work with Kate May County and get their services and industries uh linked up a little bit better. That way, people going down the shore uh have something to do in our area as uh.
As well.
Right, in forms of not just activities, but like uh hotels to stay at and all that kind of stuff.
Collaboration, it is needed. Um, I'll take where I'm at. I've been down here probably close to twenty seven, thirty years in commercial township. Like I said, I grew up in Bridgeton, but my husband was born and raised in commercial township. So he was a captain on oyster in the oyster boats. And um his father was a captain on oyster boats. And that that's generational down there. And people don't realize what is in Byvale, Port Mars, the old Shell pile, Mars Town, Mars River, that area. And it's a wealth of activities that could actually, people could tap into and use as a resource. And it's a wealth of activities that could actually, people could tap into and use as a resource for tourism. And bring, they're coming this way through the Wildwood and Cape May or whatever, they're passing right by it. Why not make that connection? Um, why not promote that collaboration? Um, to bring some viable funding that we may need for some of those projects that we put to the side. Especially if the government is gonna cut and not send funding our way. We're gonna have to be able to, um, fund some of the things on our own. And that revenue that could generate with tourism for this area, um, would be significant.
Would that run into maybe the same type of problem we were just talking about where the people who live in those areas might not want the change?
And, and that comes in time and, and that may happen. But if you, if you do it and have them engage with the decisions that are going on. You can't just throw it at them and say, this is gonna happen in your town or your area. And this is where you could go back to, we just talked about some of that grassroots stuff on a ballot. Yeah, the grassroots on a ballot or whatever.
Yeah.
If you're not having, uh, meetings or sending literature or information out, they don't know.
As a surprise.
It comes as a surprise. And then that's when the negative stuff comes out and the blast on the emails come out or whatever. Because they wasn't informed.
Right.
You didn't engage them. You just made a decision. This is what's gonna happen in your town or your area and boom. And then that's when the resistance comes.
I said, we're having fish tacos tonight. I don't care if you like it or not.
Yeah, so that, that, that's kind of where I think the direction that we are as a small community. Um, are really gonna have to think out of the box. Well, if things happen and trickle down and funding isn't available. Of course, we have some big projects that are going on and we have to mention that, that I think is gonna be kudos to this area. Um, look at what happened in the local NFL draft with a lot of our local, um, students getting drafted. Um, they could be mentors and a resource for us. Look at what Mike Trout has done all over the years. I mean, when I say out of the box, this is the kinda things that we're gonna have to have those relationships. Because people who worked, lived and became professional athletes and professionals or whatever. We're gonna have to have that relationship with them that their nonprofits or their foundations or whatever. May have to help take care of their hometown and, and bring those resources here.
Right.
And I think that's, that's needed. And it has been done. And take my hats off to all of the students and, and, and people who are from here that give back. Because it, it may not be on the Mike Trout level because they haven't gone to that level. But some of the local football, basketball, you see them out in the summertime and flyers out. Um, their college, some of them are getting endorsements from colleges now with some financial stability. They're coming back in the neighborhoods and doing programs with Millville, Thunderbolt and, you know what I mean? So to me, that shows pride. That shows commitment. That shows that. We can do it and it's achievable. We just have to not have the table so little. You know what I mean?
Absolutely.
Everybody needs to be invited some kinda way to participate and be engaged. So that we become a, a force of our own.
Yeah, yeah. We could come together as a community and build. Make everything more robust and strong.
Absolutely.
Well, we could probably sit here and talk all day, but.
We're good. You said about that. Yeah, we did.
What time is it?
It's ten after one, eleven thirty, twelve thirty, one thirty. You said about two, maybe an hour and thirty minutes, two hours. So I carved it, I carved out the time because I think it was important. And not just for me, but in general for anybody that taps in. Because we are resources to each other. It is almost, you look at assets. We are assets to each other. You have information, I have information. If we keep that information in, what good is it doing to our community? It's not.
Right.
So we have to share. We, we, we have to be able to give this information out. Acknowledge that there's programs out there, continue to do the good work that you're doing. Cause just like I say, people are informed because they, they ask me, what's that little white sign? And I had to explain to them. And I was like, that's a good thing. So guess what? At, at one of our meetings, uh, and at places that I go, I, I tried to. We, we invited you to the meet and greet and we're a little small commercial on Downtown Ship.
Right, right.
We had a little fundraising and meet and greet for our community. We reached out to you.
Yep.
Because that was a question that was asked by our community to us.
Oh, okay.
You know what I mean?
Some people are noticing.
Absolutely. You're doing a wonderful job. Keep up the great work. And anything that I could do, by all means. Um, it may, and as you can see, I try to get around, may not be right on that day, but I definitely will.
Yeah, you're, you're busy.
Some kinda way communicate back so that, you know, it's an open dialogue.
Cool.
Because I think people, like you say, you doing this. It is, is great. And if, if like you said, we were talking about volunteerism or whatever, you're only one person.
Yeah.
If some kinda way we connect people that are interested in doing this, that could be some leverage or research for you. There are some interns that may need to be, that's in politics or political science.
Or journalism.
In journalism that may, you know, be able to connect with you and you can build this. And it can grow. And, and that's what it's about.
Sure.
We can't keep all this to ourselves. Cause believe me, you've read, when you're reading through those three hundred pages and you're like, oh, my goodness.
Right.
But that's just one meeting. So imagine if you're in a county and you're trying to hit every meeting. It's just, it could be very overwhelming.
Oh, absolutely.
So we need, we, we need, we need to make sure that we have arms besides our arms and legs besides our legs that are connecting.
I hear that one hundred percent. Well, again, I'm Steve Soloff, InformTheVoteNJ.com.
Laray Smith. I'm running for county commissioner, but just, I wanna pe- people to understand. I'm more of a community leader, community organizer that wants to just make sure our county is moving in the right direction.
I hear that loud and clear.
Okay, thank you.
Very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.